We declare the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, silent in reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community and in our nation's meeting.
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. I'd like to make a motion to table item 7B, the execution of the deed conveying title to the city for the property located at 248-256 Wyoming Avenue.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to second to table item 7B. On the question?
Yes, on the question. The Phase 1 review has been completed. City Council is requesting a copy of that review. The county is apparently undertaking Phase 2. We have a sense of remediation costs at this point, but we're awaiting further information from the county in consultation with the Department of Environmental Protection.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, so move. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, annual financial report for the city of Scranton, year ended December 31, 2015, prepared by the Office of the City Controller.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, annual financial report for the city of Scranton, year ended December 31, 2016, prepared by the Office of the City Controller.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report, 2017-2016, year to date September 30, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held October 11, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report, 2017-2016, year to date September 30, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held October 11, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. We're getting close, guys. The Scranton Police Department's Fight for a Cure spaghetti dinner is going to be coming up. It's going to be held at Fratelli's Restaurant on Providence Road. It's going to be October 8th through October 22nd, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. Tickets, you can grab them now, they're $12, include spaghetti, meatballs, salad and bread, you can eat in, you can get in to go. Tickets are available at police headquarters, or 348-4139, or 558-8301. And again, all the proceeds go to American Cancer Society. Thank you.
I have one. There's a benefit for Elaine Novembreno-Hug, who is the daughter of City Controller Roseanne Novembreno, will be held at Colcoins on South Main Street in West Scranton, October 22nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The donation is $10. It will benefit Elaine and her family. She has undergone a lung transplant with complications, and your donation will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
City Hall will be closed this Monday, October 9th, in observance of Columbus Day. DPW will also be off this day, so Refuge and Blue Recycling will be one day behind next week.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodewanitz?
Today's October 5th, 33 days to the general election on November 7th, which raises the question, if you have any information and could share it later in the meeting, on the status of the Arcadis study on stormwater management costs. I think it would be extremely helpful for the electorate if we would have the feedback on that issue as part of an offshoot of the sewer authority sale. So if you have any information on that, perhaps you can show, share that in motions. And also in motions, is there such a thing as a Knowles insurance list? I'm still waiting, it's been six months, I'm getting old, and old, and old. And soon I won't need that list, I'll need next year's list, so if you can share that too. Also, on September 27th, I was here when they opened the one bid for the Independent Medical Examination Coordinator, the RFP, which, as you know, is a key piece of municipal work which has to take place for the proceeds of the sewer authority sale to flow to the pension funds. So there was one bid from an organization called Vocational Rehab Auto-Clark Summit. If you have any information on whether or not they are going to get that contract, that would be helpful too. I attended the information session on reassessment this afternoon at noon, I was happy to see that two councilmen were able to make it, you, Mr. Wexler, and Mr. Evans. I don't know which one of you was in the gallery throwing peanuts down, but that was not very nice. And for people who haven't viewed it on ECTV or were able to get here, I understand that PEL is hosting a one-hour reassessment session on Saturday, October 7th, at 1:00 p.m. at the University of Scranton in Lehee Hall. They're going to look at the reassessment question, as well as questions regarding the homestead exemption, so anybody who missed today's session can go there. And the last thing I want to address is, I went to the county commissioners' meeting yesterday, and Chief Graziano was there, and there was a resolution to approve a seminar for the general public on an active shooter scenario, which coincidentally was not driven by what happened in Las Vegas, it just happened to come up on the agenda. And then you may have seen on the news that yesterday afternoon, they apprehended someone on Marywood University's campus. Now, I understand Marywood kind of straddled Scranton and Dunmore, so you may not consider them part of Scranton, but I do consider them part of Scranton. Obviously, a lot of Scranton residents are students there or employees, so I want to commend Chief Graziano and the Police Department for taking the initiative to do something like that. I remember sitting there at the county commissioners' meeting, and a couple of people were whispering, well, you know, a thing like that would never happen in Scranton. Famous last words. You know, by 4:00 p.m., that thing was on the news. So I think when that seminar comes up, I'm going to try to attend, and I would strongly encourage everybody else who can get there to get there, because these things are happening, and it's a darn shame. Thank you.
Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. About two weeks ago, I received this piece of garbage in the mail. Candidate Mulligan accuses Mayor Doherty of giving himself, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Courtright, of giving himself a $5,000 raise. That's a lie. The mayor can't give himself a raise. It's got to go before City Council and approved by council. So, last thing we need is another person from Greenridge that lies to the people. And last week, in the Times Tribune, a lady wrote a letter to the editor saying the mayor, Mayor Courtright, put the garbage fee up to $300. That's another lie. This was done under the authority administration. This lady, Phyllis Reinhardt, and she goes on to tell everybody to vote for Mr. Mulligan. Everybody in Greenridge, I don't know if they're all liars or what, but we don't need people like that in City Hall. Next thing, I brought this up quite a long time ago, but there's no turning lane on the corner of Main Avenue and Jackson Street going south towards Taylor. They put one in going the other direction, but there still is a one going south. And sometimes that holds up people, somebody's there turning, and people want to go straight, they're blocked by that person wanting to turn. And another thing, I brought this up a while back, in Tripp Park, on the last block of Elizabeth Street, there's a storm drain that, it's open on top, and I think that's a safety hazard now, it's all overgrown by weeds, so it's hard to even see it.
Yeah, I remember, you brought that up, it was like the middle of July.
Somebody could easily fall into that storm.
Yeah, I remember, because it was still daylight after one of our meetings, I took a drive up, and it's like, like this square around, right? It's like perfectly square, it's kind of like almost up on something. Yeah, I know exactly the one you meant. Yeah, so we'll take another look at that to see where that is, whose property it's on, if that's our responsibility, but yeah, definitely needs to be covered up. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Alright, thank you. And lastly, there's another thing I brought up quite a few months ago, is people riding bikes and jogging on the city streets. And it was, I don't know if anybody watched News Tonight, there was a tragedy in Shenandoah. 13-year-old was hit by a car and killed yesterday in Shenandoah. I don't think people should be riding bikes or jogging on the city streets. I had an incident back in August, coming down East Gibson Street, at the corner of Capous and East Gibson, just about to make the turn onto Capous, I had to ride away. Person on the bike came right through the stop sign. If they're riding bikes, they still have to obey the stop signs. If I wasn't a responsible driver, that person might not be here right now. I think it should be illegal to ride bikes on the street, and even jog on the street. People have been killed, I think something should be done. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan, once again. You know, there's a debate running through this country at this time after the shooting, but some people have been, you know, I've been at work listening to talk, right, I'm a truck driver, so been listening to some of that, and, you know, it's nice to see that some people understand, not the gun issue, but how our government was actually formed, and before there was a president, exactly what this country was like after the revolution. And it's good to hear people who understand where we came from, and maybe that's why sometimes I wonder how we got to where we are now, which is just mind-boggling, considering that the governor of Pennsylvania is getting ready to, he called it, the news called it, monetizing liquor control, Pennsylvania's liquor control system. You know, the residents of this city are going to have, or, Lackawanna County are going to have a real issue on their hands soon, this reassessment issue. And I'm hoping that the people throughout Lackawanna County vote no to that, because it's not that the government doesn't have enough money, it's not competent enough to handle the money that it does have, and it's borrowed excessive amounts of money on top of the money that it's received in taxes. So as long as we continue to allow this silliness to continue, we're not safe in any of the things we own. Really, we need an elected government that understands that we have to abolish all property tax in Pennsylvania to solve the problems that elected governments have caused. You know, we take a look, and there's been a lot of discussion here about the Scranton sewer authority sale, and like I said last week, it's probably illegal all the way around, and everything that's been done with all the money is illegal all the way around. But the people that are going to have to pay that money back if it ever, is ever challenged, are the residents of this city, not the people we elected. And, you know, it's pretty pathetic, and another thing that needs to go away in this city is the 2.4% wage tax. It needs to completely go away. In order for Scranton to become a prosperous, and growing, and thriving city, we've got to stop overtaxing the residents, so we need a couple of things here. Les has an opinion about Mr. Mulligan, and he's entitled to that, and some people have opinions about Mr. Courtright, and they're entitled to that. But what this city really needs, which may be either one of those two candidates or neither one of those candidates, is a candidate who gets elected and understands that there's a definite need to cut Scranton's budget by at least 30%, and where those cuts will be made? Well, that's up to council and the mayor. But that's what really has to happen, and you have to convince people to come into this city and invest. And you know, the nonprofits buying property after property, that's not progress, that's the exact opposite of progress, and it's allowed to continue. And then funneling through this money, through this council and grants, and whatever other instruments are used to fund their projects, is also a detriment to the residents of this city. But, you know, we live in the land of make-believe here, and it just really is time for somebody to realize that the people who live in this city have been under Act 47 for 25 years, and it hasn't done one single thing for the residents of this city. And our state government hasn't stepped in one single time to try to reorganize this city and force this city to make tough choices, and we've, the people we've elected on council haven't done it either. And we find ourselves in worse shape now than when we started. And, you know, I hope that Mr. Spraglia would get up again and talk about the parking authority, because, you know, he's got a great insight into that. And I think the residents should realize that the sewer deal wasn't the only problem. The parking deal, believe me, was far from being a deal, and it's taken a lot of revenue away from the city, not just assets. But then again, we seem to elect people who don't think before they vote, and it's a problem. And with all the tools you have in your hands, you don't use one of them. And as our population dwindles and ages, I don't know what the solution for the city is, because the downtown buildings, they've been converted into apartments because you can't do business in the downtown, you can't do business in this city, and somebody needs to change that. But I doubt it'll be this council, or any council in the near future, or our elected government. Thank you.
Bob Bowles?
Tonight's going to be a little lesson in transparency. I've heard a lot about it, especially from Mr. Gahan, so we're going to give you a little lesson on it tonight. This is from the Scranton Sewer Authority. Payments that were paid to James Mulligan, who's running for mayor in this city on a Republican ticket. Between '06 and '12, he received $238,521.21. This does not include the health insurance that was separate that he was paid for. He did not pay sewer bills while solicitor, liens were filed in '07, '08, and '12, received health benefits for himself and family while solicitor estimating in excess of $34,000. Attached are the following, right here. A summary showing the amounts James Mulligan invoiced the Scranton Sewer Authority from '06, '11, at 110 an hour or 140 an hour. He left Scranton Sewer Authority in '11 to take the OEC solicitor position. It is believed that this is not the full amount he received. Number two, health insurance invoices of the Scranton Sewer Authority showing Mulligan illegally received health insurance benefits for himself and his family at authority expense when he was not, and I repeat, not an employee. It is believed that these are not all the payments made for him by the Scranton Sewer Authority, and that he received benefits the entire time he was solicitor. The attached payments total $34,198.12, see the Municipal Authorities Act 53PA/CS 5607-D2O, which prohibits the provision of health insurance benefits. Also included are two advices of council from the Pennsylvania State Ethics Commission, which ruled that the recipient of benefits is illegal, or the receipt of benefits is illegal. It is also permissible to receive group health insurance benefits unless you are an employee, per Blue Cross Blue Shield regulations. James C. Mulligan was the only sewer authority solicitor to receive health insurance benefits. When this was discovered by Scranton Sewer Authority members, there was objection, he eventually left the position, a solicitor moved to City Hall to OEC director, which, or solicitor which paid him a salary in health insurance benefits. In spite of the substantial compensation received during the time he was serving as solicitor, he did not pay a sewer bill, liens were filed against him in '07, '08, and '12. Clerk of Judicial has those records. I have penned the letter, and I will read it. Attorney General Josh Shapiro, Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General, Strawberry Square, Harrisburg, PA. Read James Mulligan, Esquire candidate for city of Scranton mayor. Dear Attorney General, please find enclosed material that details funds taken illegally for health insurance by the Scranton Sewer Authority and was provided to attorney James Mulligan, who is not on the payroll as an employee for the Scranton Sewer Authority. Therefore, by law, Mr. Mulligan was not entitled to the health insurance provided. Mr. Mulligan, who is an attorney, knew he was not entitled to this insurance, and by accepting such benefits for himself and his family, he was breaking the law and committing insurance fraud. Please keep in mind, the Scranton Sewer Authority has not been disbanded, and Scranton City Council has failed to bring this unlawful action to your attention. I am a resident of Scranton, PA, and requesting that your office investigate the sweeping under the rug and its potential act of insurance fraud against the citizens of Scranton by Scranton City Council and attorney James V. Mulligan. A similar case was brought upon Michael Denny, Esquire of Danville, PA. Respectfully, Bob Bowles, Scranton. What's going on here, and I've listened to you, Mr. Gahan, in your paper here, you won't be a bully, you won't do bullying, but let me tell you something. I sat there when you bullied Mayor Courtright, when he stood on the stage openly before everybody to take questions. You not only came once, you tried to bully him the second time because you ran in front of me. And yet you talk about transparency and being a bully. Take a look in the picture what bullying really means. You act in the position that you're supposed to be in, but now you could put your transparency where your mouth is and do something about it. Additionally, the Scranton Parking Authority, the Mall Garage, we have 500 parking spaces, yet not one of you, transparency, went over and said, "Why is he charging $10 for St. Patrick's Day?", and where are our 500 parking spaces for the city of Scranton that we paid almost $5 million for? Transparency, not done. Keeping in mind, you all signed to Scranton to sell the recovery plan to the sewer authority, to sell it in the recovery plan. You're all accountable. Transparency. So you want to keep throwing that word out, you want transparency, let's see what you do at this juncture. And I will give unquestionable credibility to Mayor Bill Courtright of the city of Scranton. And Mr. Evans, you were there, and I applaud you for showing up when the, came to Scranton was the American tollman spirit ride. And what the spirit ride is, it represents all the first responders that have been killed across the country, and it signifies the move-over law. Mayor Courtright presented the key of the city to the American tollman and the spirit ride. Hang on, Mr. Wexler, this is about something that's credibility.
Mr. Bowles, you only have-
And maybe this is why you could keep your mouth closed.
Yes, and you have five minutes, and you surpassed it.
No, I'm not paying attention to you. The spirit ride-
Mr. Bowles, thank you, Mr. Bowles.
-represents the city, and Mayor Courtright, don't shut the mic and act like a coward.
Yeah, I'm not a coward.
Because you never showed up.
You are over your time.
You're out of order, because you never know enough to shut up and listen.
No, Mr. Bowles, you're over your time.
Let me tell you.
Good evening, Council. For pretty close to two years now, I've been coming here to address the problem with the flooding in Kaiser Valley. I keep getting the same answers, you know, you're looking into it, and you're not getting answers back or calls back. So I'm wondering, last time I was here, I don't know, I just feel like nobody's listening to me, except they did flush half the drain about maybe nine months ago. So we got that done, but it's all plugged up again. I'm wondering if anybody could tell me the two questions I asked last time I was here? Can you tell me, like, if you're all listening? It's the same thing over and over again, pretty much.
Yeah, Len, I mean, when you were here last, well, I think it was about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. The report I got back was that the city planner and DPW was researching on the actual owner of the pipe and the installer of it. I haven't seen anything come back to me. Lord, did we get anything back yet from the city planner? Could we send something out again to the city planner, see if there's been any progress on that? That, Len, that was the last I heard on it, I haven't heard anything new, but again, I know these aren't the answers you're looking for, but we'll follow up with them and see what they're doing with it.
Okay, same thing. All right, last time I brought up the question now of the big PP&amp;L power plant on the upper side of Kaiser Avenue there. Where is that water going to go? Anybody check into it? That's going to be a major thing. You know, the water has to run down the mountain, and all the neighbors agree with me, it's going to make its way to Kaiser Creek, and Kaiser Creek is the biggest part of the problem with the flooding. And, see, nobody even bothered to try to find out.
Mr. Srebro, I did find out, I spoke about it last week, about the amount of trees that were cut down up there. I don't know if you heard my answer to that last week of why so many trees had to be cut down. It's a federal guideline for spacing amongst power lines so storms don't damage it. I know one of your questions was of where the tree's going to be replaced, and the answer to that is no. There has to be a fire line alongside the power lines by federal law.
Okay, could we look into that question about where the water is going to go?
I spoke to, I spoke to city planner King, and since that's a utility, they had to go through special NPDS, earth disturbance permits, and that's all on file with the state, not with the city. They went through the state, not the city.
So PP&amp;L won't answer my question.
No, DEP is, they're responsible for maintaining that project.
And I guess I got to get that question, and then you're saying, like, you won't contact DEP?
Well, we will, we will, but you're asking who's responsible for it, I'm telling you, the Department of Environmental Protection is responsible for it.
Okay, so will someone contact DEP to find out where that water runoff is going to go?
Yeah, we'll, try to get to the, here's the thing, though, we get you these answers, and you're not satisfied with them. When we get you the answers, we're trying to, we're trying to get you the right answers that we can, but the issues that you have right now, Mr. Perry's been working on them, and the responses that we're waiting for are coming from the DPW and the mayor's office. We're trying to get those answers for you here, we are. And just as an example, the last time you were here, you spoke about nothing was happening with Mr. Young's problem on his street. It took us almost two years to get that finally to a point where it's going to be fixed. So we try to do our best here as city council, and sometimes we're successful, and sometimes it takes us a long time to be successful, and we are trying to get you your answers.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Good evening, Council. I just, I just can't comprehend how this, this army of tax cheats, nothing is being done about it with council. The mayor, nobody cares. Mr. Cross brags how good the city is. Hundreds and hundreds of LLCs have put this city to sleep. It seems like you say you're LLC, and that's the end of someone having to pay taxes. This is a disgrace that, now, the city wants to buy this white elephant to help out another LLC that's in trouble. What is it, RSM or whatever? This is a useless, worthless piece of property no one in their right mind has wanted all these years, so sell it to the city. Then let our mayor have another no-tax zone on Wyoming because the 600 block, you've got that Scranton Properties, they owe $40,000 or $50,000. Like I said last week, how come I have to pay taxes, these people have to pay taxes, all these others in the paper owe thousands upon thousands, and not one move out of anybody to help the taxpayers collect? Well, that's because we got a bleeding-heart council, I guess, I don't know. I'm not mad at you, Joe, if you're looking at me like that.
I look at everybody the same, Mr. Elman.
I still love you. I had three people saying you were rude to me. I'm forgiving. About this multicolored architectural disgrace of a high school. When it was built, I don't think that people understood, every time you have a curve and a point and an angle, it adds money to the project. I could, I never knew that there wasn't no air conditioning in that place. I think, I think council and the mayor immediately have Mr., this fleet of lawyers, Emerson and his fleet of lawyers negotiate one of these multimillion-dollar contracts and air condition the place so these whiny teachers will finally have some, some peace. Maybe we could move from third from the bottom all up, if that's the reason why our school kids are so bad. It seems to me there's 850 teachers for 10,000 children, it'd look like they'd be, they'd be better than they are, you know, the results. Last week, believe it or not, I'm a veteran. I have three years in the Air National Guard and five years in the standby reserves, so I certainly don't oppose those gentlemen last week. But that is a long-term project that they, to me, it should take years and years to accomplish what they brought up here. And the lady that needed the bathroom for the school, I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with it, there is a book of federal grants at the second floor of the library, and it is invaluable. Like for that woman, you look up a home for runaways, and it says, "This money is already there, this money was put there last year," that's what it's called, federal grants. Then under it it say how to get an automobile, and how to get beds, and so forth. These people, instead of coming here wanting our block money, they need to go look at that book of federal grants. Have any of you ever seen it? It's a godsend, instead of coming here begging for money, like I said. Okay. You don't have to tell me to sit down and shut up tonight, I'm happy.
I never said shut up, I just said thank you. Thank you, Mr. Elman, thank you for your service as well.
Marie Schumacher.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to speak on the motion 7B that you tabled, because I believe what I want to say is still pertinent. There are four main issues to that agenda item. They are, number one, as described by Brenda Sacco, Deputy Director of Operations and Finance for the Lackawanna County Department of Planning and Economic Development, this is a prime location. Taking this property off the tax rule would be a travesty and add to the burden of the taxpaying property owners that we're forced to bear. At a minimum, I believe the concurrence for the liability, for conveying this property from taxpaying to tax-exempt should first be obtained from both the Scranton School Board and the county, as they also stand to lose property tax revenue. The land portion of the assessment is already established at $60,000, and using an average of several downtown corner commercial properties that are of six floors, I calculated the 2017 property tax probably would have been about $50,000. That's a half a million dollars over a decade that you'd be flushing down the tubes, and I actually think it would be more, but I was, I didn't want to go overboard. And then, number two, per the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, as of eight days ago, I have a copy of the message here, previous reports, this is what was responded to me, previous reports submitted to DEP evaluated the conditions based on non-residential future use for the property, and specifically placing a cap over the area where contaminated soil was identified. The definition for a non-residential property as defined in the Land Recycling Act II shall not include schools, nursing homes, or other residential-style facilities or recreational areas. Site conditions would need to be reevaluated for how you are defining a green space. Under the site-specific standard, it is possible to meet a residential use scenario, as long as it can be demonstrated that all potential routes of exposure are evaluated for that specific use. An environmental covenant would also be recorded on the property that would spell out what activities would not be allowed, such as tree planting, gardens, use of groundwater, et cetera. Taking on this potential liability of additional environmental remediation might be considered if, if we knew the cost. The only estimate that we have is contained in the lawsuit itself as several hundred thousand dollars. It is unlikely that any EPA funding received by the county for cleanup would be available, as the purpose of those funds is economic development. Number three, the lack of transparency regarding 7B. The capital budget said, "The green space project noted in the budget is contemplated and based on a distinct need." Sadly, no one saw fit to mention what seems obvious, that the distinct need is to settle the lawsuit against the city. So it boils down to which potential liability is greater, proceeding with the lawsuit or buying the property, converting it to a green space, and maintaining the property on which no taxes will accrue. What is known about each? The lawsuit is based on a breach of contract, which really is not a contract at all, as it was never approved by city council, and is therefore not a valid contract. So I say shame on RSM's lawyer for basing a case on an invalid piece of paper signed by one individual. Approving 7B would make a reference settlement document which has also not been approved by council, a legal document. So I believe consideration should be given to coming down on the side of trusting the mayor's select lawyers to win the lawsuit, and then supporting the county's bid for EPA funding to remediate the property and get it back on the tax rolls. And I hope you will do that. And just as a status, Mr. Gaughan, may I ask three questions?
You have one additional minute to finish your thought.
Okay, you asked for three things two weeks ago. A copy of the settlement agreement between the city and RMS, a copy of the grant application in order to rehab the property to a green space, and a copy of the grant application the county has for remediating brownfields, and an estimate of the cost that it's going to take to remediate the piece of property in order for the city to be able to make it a green space. How many of those have you received to date?
The first three, the last one, I have not received yet, because I don't think there is an actual official estimate of how much it's gonna cost to remediate it. And I think that's one of the reasons that we tabled it, so we could get more information on that.
You have the first three?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are you going to share those?
Yeah, sure, I can give you a copy of those.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes and fees paid. Well, to start, I wish you people would get a motion that when you accept royalties from Comcast, it'd be paid in 30, lots of 30 pieces of silver, bars or whatever, be just great, you know? That would be the honest thing. Reassessment, with $13 million being stated as the cost, I have one question on that, can the conductors be trusted? Two weeks ago, I made a comment on, a comment that we're a rat hole, and they would like to see their money being taken and used for what they see fit, which was a local school. And Pell and the Chamber of Commerce were complicit, and they brought in Mr. Amoroso, and I would like to point out at this time, not one idea that came out of anyone else's pocket, other than the citizens of Scranton, has not wound up in court or been overturned. So, they're right, maybe we are a rat hole. If I thought that, I wouldn't have bought a house until. Parties, we have an election coming up, and if you're really dissatisfied, at the bottom of the column, you can put down none of the above. And if you're really interested in some change you can count on, don't forget, "The object for dictator, equal tyranny for all." And the street signs project, I think it would be feasible to design and produce decals and stick them over the viable street signs. Some of them have to be replaced, and some of them do not, they're just faded, so if you just stuck it over there, and you would know what street you were on, and it could be reflective material, I mean, we do it cheaply enough when we want to elect Joe, Joe the plumber, and put it on our bumper, so I think we could, we could save a lot of money there and get the job done in a timely basis, so we won't be waiting three years for street signs. Once again, on the trash, please, no surprises after the election. It's as important as policing fire, and having people throwing it all over town is not a viable option. You know, I bought a bag, used to buy bags up in Susquehanna County, and the bag broke. Thought I left the garbage and threw the bag on the truck. I couldn't tape the bag to another bag and pick up the garbage and put it there next week, because I didn't have a bag, I had to come up with the second bag, you know? Privatized trash, not to mention the neighbors were awfully proud to deposit it in front of our house. And please pay special attention to Ma Schumacher's comments tonight. It's really, that was, that property was torn down because of the medical school, and it was supposed to be apartments and everything, and it didn't work out, but why should we take the hit for it? And also, the, the electric company up on West Mountain there, PPL, we really need to be, pay attention to that, because these people are ready to start building boats instead of houses over there in West Side, so I probably won't be here next week, so thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. First, I just want to, I just want to make a quick announcement about my absence last week. As many of you know, that we had a death in the family, we lost our mother-in-law, and it was very sad, but I just want to say thank you for, for all the condolences and emails and texts that I got from everybody. It really meant a lot to my family and to my wife. You know, she'll be missed truly, she was a great lady, single mom, raised a great girl that, you know, I'm proud that I'll be with for the rest of my life, and she'll be sorely missed, but we do miss her. On to some city business. 7B is tabled, so I won't be discussing that tonight, but I do have strong opinions on that, which I have no problem sharing once we bring that back on, on the docket for a final vote within the next couple of weeks. Some house cleaning, Mrs. Reed, can we get, I know we talked about it earlier, but can we just make sure that we get something out to DPW about that end of Elizabeth Street, easy for me to say, that drainage grate? I do remember being on-site there, and it, it's not like a regular drain basin, and it's really close to railroad tracks. So I don't know, maybe if it's something with the railroad property or not, but it's right at the end of the street, and it's right by the railroad tracks, and it is kind of often a weeded area. It doesn't look like something for drainage, so I'm not really sure what it is, but it's definitely a hazard, there's no two ways about it, so it's got to get covered by something. Also, can we just do another follow-up? I know, you know, Len's, he's just pulling his hair out, and I do understand that, but the last I've heard was that Mr. King, Mr. Gaughan were doing some research into the pipe. Can we just see where they are with that research? I know they were, they were trying to find the installer and where the property that that actually lies on. And, you know, it's gone on for a while, and I know they've been working on it, but, you know, as someone who lives there, that gets flooded periodically, it's just not, it's not fast enough, so, you know, I do appreciate the work they're doing, but any news that they can get, that we can get over to Len, I'm sure he would appreciate it. I have some firehouse updates. We got some information from Mr. Balzoni this week. The rooftop work is going to start in the next couple of days, actually, it's gonna be started on Tuesday, and the order of progress is going to be, Engine 7 will be first, Engine 4, and then Rescue. The temporary roof they put on Engine 10 is actually doing really well and is holding up, and that's, that's actually going to allow them to get to those other roofs first, before they go back and get around to Engine 10. And on a side note, we also have some legislation in Seventh Order tonight, once, and if that's passed, that will trigger into effect the plumbing, the electrical, HVAC, and all the other work that has to be done. And once we, if we pass this legislation, that will go into effect, and we'll get a timetable for that, too. And when I get that, I will, you know, more than happily pass that on. And that is all I have for you tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just a few brief comments. I'd like to extend my condolences to Mr. Perry and his family as well at this rough time you're going through, and we're here with you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Couple of comments, not gonna talk too much tonight. Couple of comments, not going to talk too much tonight, I'm feeling a little under the weather, but a couple of things I want to mention. I want to give a shout-out to our police department for a great job with the situation at Marywood over, over this week. As one of our speakers mentioned, you know, the tragedy that we saw in Las Vegas is something we never want to see play out in our community, and I know, we're very thankful to have a police department that is trained and ready for these type of situations, and it's critical that that type of training continues. So I do want to, you know, commend them for a job well done, along with the Dunbar Police Department, who, you know, they worked hand in hand to stop this situation before it became something terrible, like we just saw, very scary, the amount of guns and ammunition that this individual had. Mr. Cerebro brought up, you know, a number of issues with the flooding, and obviously the ongoing situation on his block is very frustrating, and I've been saying all along that the, again, although there's specific issues on your block, the whole Kaiser Valley and West Mountain has a larger issue of water runoff from the mountain. I know that the PPNL project unfortunately is something the city didn't have any control over, couldn't stop, it was approved by the PUC, there's federal guidelines in there as well, but if we can, if my colleagues agree, if we could send correspondence to PPNL asking if there's any assistance they could offer regarding the mitigation of the runoff from this project. It doesn't take a genius to realize that when you cut down trees and you take out the brush, that there's going to be more water runoff off of the mountain. I don't know if PPNL will be willing to do anything, but it's certainly something we could ask. You know, the situation has gotten worse over the years, especially as development has occurred further up on the mountain outside of the city. And that's the water, really, that's running downhill and eventually winding up in Kaiser Valley. Finally, again, I am happy that this item is tabled tonight regarding the corner of Wyoming Avenue. As I've mentioned, this is something I'm extremely conflicted with because I do see the need to settle the lawsuit, that fighting out in court may be more expensive than settling the lawsuit in this manner, but I don't want to see this property off the tax rolls. I think it's a prime piece of commercial real estate in downtown Scranton. Over the last week, I have had discussions with business owners and property owners in that area. Over the course of the next week, I'm going to speak with my colleagues and work with our solicitor to see if it's possible to offer an amendment to this legislation, asking that after obtaining the property, the city puts it on the market for a certain period of time to see if there's interest for a private developer to develop that land. Again, in a worst-case scenario, a park is certainly going to look much nicer than what's currently there, and if it settles a lawsuit at a lower cost, you know, there's certainly a benefit there, but I would much prefer to see that land being used in a commercial way. You know, again, it's a very prime piece of downtown real estate, and if the city can put that on the market and work through our Economic Development Office and with the chamber to try to find somebody willing to invest, I think that would be a preferred course of action versus putting up a park. But I'm glad for the week, another week to look into this further, and by reading the legislation, the legislation we're voting on is strictly on the acquirement, require, acquiring the property. It doesn't have anything to do with a grant or any of this other work that has been talked about that is in the works. So by looking at it, I think amending it to require a, you know, period where investors or any developers in the downtown can look to, to look at the property shouldn't be too difficult, but it's something I'll work on over the course of the next week and discuss with my colleagues to see if there's any support for that idea. So that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. As promised, I will be discussing reassessment again this evening at a Lackawanna County Commissioner's meeting, and prior to the Commissioner's final vote on the ballot question, I asked him to postpone putting the question on the ballot until a comprehensive property assessment study could be completed by an independent third party. Tonight, I'm going to discuss one such study completed by Blair County by Weiss-Burkhart Cramer LLC prior to their decision to do a reassessment, as well as offering some comments on the informational sessions being held by the county as we speak. On the first page of the study, in an overview section, states the following: "Many are not aware that the primary goal of property assessments is to ensure that fair and equitable assessments of property are set so that the tax burden is equally spread among all property owners." It goes on to say, "If assessment systems are not periodically adjusted, they become regressive, so that properties appreciating at a higher rate are taxed at less than their fair share, and properties appreciating at a lesser rate or those that have depreciated in value pay more than their fair share." So based on those statements, does anyone think a county that hasn't had a reassessment in nearly fifty years has an assessment system that is fair and equitable? The first of the two-day reassessment informational session started yesterday. I did attend the session today at City Council Chambers. According to today's edition of the Times Tribune, which has become, what has become increasingly clear, is that many residents are confused and have misconceptions about both the question and the process. Also, based on newspaper reports, it appears that the Commissioner that is firmly against the reassessment and voted to put the question on the ballot but did not second a motion to postpone the question until next year's primary, which by the way, would have allowed for an educational period that would have measured in months instead of weeks, has now decided to rail against the process itself. You just can't make this stuff up. So while I found the informational session that I intended to be fair and without prejudice, it is still a case to me of too little, too late. But I will cite some examples of what I thought was fairness within the presentation. Attorney Joan Price, the county's reassessment expert, stated about tax fairness, "That's the goal, to make certain that property owners are paying no more or no less than their fair share of real estate taxes. That is the purpose behind it." Yes, Attorney Price, that is exactly the reason we do a reassessment, so thank you very much for that statement. Another speaker brought up the tried and true scare tactic, and this was last evening, of the senior citizen being hurt by a reassessment. Attorney Price responded, "Well, not necessarily." Yes, Attorney Price, that is also right. I'll take it a step further. In my opinion, the opposite of what the speaker proposed may happen. Many seniors will fall into the category that I mentioned earlier, where properties appreciating at a lesser rate or those who have depreciated in value pay more than their fair share in taxes. So a county-wide reassessment is the only adjustment that truly addresses uniformity. It is also important to note that a reassessment cannot be conducted to increase tax revenue. So for those that like to fan that flame, they are incorrect. Strict anti-windfall laws are in place restricting jurisdictions from reaping a windfall due to reassessment. In fact, following a reassessment, counties and municipalities are prohibited from collecting more than an additional ten percent of the aggregate real property taxes collected the year prior to the reassessment unless that taxing jurisdiction has voted to enact a tax increase. So finally, I want to conclude by making one more comment, which is a quote from the Blair County study. It says, "While every tax is a burden, it is more cheerfully borne when the citizen feels that he is only required to bear his proportionate share of that burden, measured by the value of his property to that of his neighbor. This is not an idle thought in the mind of the taxpayer, nor a mere speculative theory advocated by learned writers on the subject, but it is a fundamental principle written to the constitutions and statutes of almost every state in this country." Those words were written and developed from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in the year 1909. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gaughan?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to send my condolences and my prayers to Mr. Perry and his family with their recent loss. And I also want to send my prayers and condolences to all those who were affected by the shooting and devastation out in Las Vegas. And I bring this up because of the issue that we had the other day with the gunman at Marywood, and thankfully, that situation was averted. But I have to say that every time I turn on the news, I'm actually afraid to turn on the news, there is so much senseless violence and bloodshed in this country, and it's at an all-time high, and I have to ask, for what? For what reason? Besides ruining people's lives, what does it accomplish? It accomplishes absolutely nothing. I think that we, as American citizens, have to start listening to one another, and we have to start having a little bit more compassion for one another, and we need to stop glorifying violence because as far as I can see, we're losing a whole generation to it. This Sunday, October 8th, is the 22nd Annual Steamtown Marathon. I want to wish all of the runners in this race the best of luck. I also want to caution motorists to be mindful of the runners, and I want to thank, specifically thank, the DPW for taking care of the race route. They've done a good job, and they'll continue to do that until the race starts on Sunday. I want to briefly update everyone on a meeting that was held last week in City Hall, which I wasn't able to attend due to my work schedule, and the meeting was regarding Scranton's levy systems, and I want to thank Mrs. Reed for getting together with our city planner and providing us with an update. The meeting was held last week with our city planner, our city engineer, FEMA and PMA, and they're dubbed as the Local Levy Partnership Team. And the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the status of our levy project and flood mapping. And throughout my tenure on council, I've received several questions from those residents who live in Green Ridge, Lower Green Ridge, the plot, and that's one of the reasons that I like to update everyone on this. So the, some of the points that came up at the meeting, the city is trying to get levy certified according to FEMA regulations, which go back to before 2011, and FEMA has asked the Army Corps of Engineers to do a new study on the Lackawanna River. The flow of the Lackawanna River is actually twenty percent higher due to bad storms, some of the bad storms that we've had in the past, which actually skewed the numbers. After Hurricane Katrina a number of years ago, FEMA became extremely precise all over the United States with regard to levies. So in the city of Scranton, we have three separate levies: the plot, Green Ridge, and Albright Avenue. And the Green Ridge levy is considered from the plot to Green Ridge Street. All of these levies were considered flood zones, however, there is a notation that they are protected by a levy under construction. Engineering has been completed on those levies. However, they need to be designated to meet the 100-year flood, including a freeboard, which equates to three feet higher on top of the levy. The city has met the 100-year flood plan but is short on the freeboard in some areas, so they're a little short on the three extra feet that's needed. In the new analysis that was provided, the plot with some additional documentation can actually meet FEMA's requirement to be certified. So the plot will not be in a flood zone. Green Ridge is a little short, however, because they don't have that extra three feet in some areas on the levy. So it has been designated a flood zone D, which means that it's not required to carry flood insurance, and the D part of that removes the requirement to carry the flood insurance. The Albright levy is a different story. At the meeting, it was discussed that a flood can overtop the levy in certain areas if we had one of these 100-year storms, so this area will more than likely remain a flood zone. Senator Casey and Congressman Cartwright are going to be petitioned to have the Army Corps do more work in the Albright area where the levy is. So we're very close to meeting the freeboard requirement, but we have a little bit more to do. There is eventually going to be a report issued on all of the things that I just mentioned. The officials made this information available to the city at the meeting that was held, and I will share the report when it's actually issued. A letter was sent on behalf of City Council, as I mentioned last week, when I made a motion. It was sent October 2nd to Amazon, asking for their consideration to place their second corporate headquarters in Scranton or Lackawanna County. I've gotten some really great feedback from people all over the city of Scranton about this possibility. We're looking at 50,000 jobs and an average salary of over $100,000. And I think people are hungry, from what I can see, for some positive news and for some employment opportunities in the city and in Lackawanna County. We did notify DPW this week that our office has received several complaints about the lot next to the swimming pool at Connell Park on Gibbon Street. Recently, an opening was made in the fence, and material was being dumped at the site. The lot needed to be secured to prevent further dumping. I'd like to thank the DPW because that was taken care of immediately. There are also several neighbors who contacted me about 618 East Elm Street. This is a property that the city owns, and it's vacant. The property is severely overgrown, so we have reached out to the DPW and Licensing and Inspections Department to see if we can get something taken care of there. I'd also like to ask Director Shrive for a response to my letter asking for additional information about the mandate at work that was performed by the Scranton Sewer Authority. Also received several complaints about the 1800 block of Shimf Court in South Scranton that needs to be paved, and there's some other issues that we'll be sending to DPW about that. Also, there's a major issue in the 300 block of Patterson Avenue. We've sent two letters now to the DPW and our city engineer with no response. The gentleman that lives in this block is getting severe water runoff in his garage in his house every time it rains. He has tried to contact the city as well, so if we could send another letter on his behalf, I would appreciate it. As for Mr. Cerebro's issue, I sent a letter on that months ago, still have received no response. So for whatever it's worth at this point, I would like to send another letter, just so we can at least get an idea of a plan on what action has to take place to take care of his issue, because I hate to see him come here week after week and get nowhere. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaughan. Just to follow up on Mr. Gaughan's comments regarding the, our flood levy system, it's been quite a long time, and people have kind of forgotten how we got to the point to have that sophisticated flood levy system within the city. You have to go back, and I've been around long enough to remember this, those levies are there as a result of the hard work of the neighborhood associations that surround each levy. Those groups pushed hard to get those done. If you remember back in the early 80s, we had a few floods down in that area, and it's an example of community commitment and community spirit, that those groups were able to get a combination of city, state, and federal officials involved in this project to see it to fruition. Mr. Gaughan read some of the, some of the significance of this, and the main significance is those two areas, which are the plot and Green Ridge, that means that you're no longer going to be required to have to have flood insurance, which is a huge expense for someone trying to buy a home, especially in the area of the plot. I see the plot expanding tremendously with the fact that you don't have to carry flood insurance over there, where sometimes I think ranges in the neighborhood from $6,000 to $9,000 a year for flood insurance. There's some great homes in the plot, there's great homes in Green Ridge, and there's great homes down in the Albright Avenue section of the city, and I think once these are freed up of the burden of the flood insurance, I think you'll see a boom in sales down there, and I'd just like to congratulate and remember those people that did that hard work all those years ago. The thing that was not mentioned with those is we have two older systems in the city as well, based upon the flooding that happened back in the 50s. There's flood control projects in East Scranton and in South Scranton that also have to require attention for the city to do the maintenance, keeping the weeds out of them, keeping the rocks out of them. So the city of Scranton right now is, is almost fully protected if we keep up the maintenance on flood control within the city. Stormwater management is a different story, but actual, the control of the rivers and creeks in the city is well under control, and it's something that's because of hard work of a combination of everyone. And although it's not Amazon, I did attend a seminar on Tuesday concerning a company called Pennsylvania Medical Solutions. Pennsylvania Medical Solutions is going to be a manufacturer of medicinal marijuana products. It has nothing to do with smoking marijuana or anything like that, but they're going to make topicals, and they're going to make pills. This is a cutting-edge technology within the country right now. There's only, there's going to be 12 of these production plants within the city, or within the state, I'm sorry, and one of them will be in Scranton, and so we are going to be on the cutting edge of this. I was there, attended one of the employment seminars also, and there were so many young people there at this seminar, people with chemistry degrees, biology degrees, horticulture degrees, that are currently very limited in the positions that they can find in our hometown. The university produces many... The university produces many chemistry students. So this is an opportunity for some of our graduates to stay home and, and contribute and work in this new industry and I congratulate the investment that Pennsylvania Medical Solutions is, is making in our area. And one more shout out to the Scranton Police Department. For the past few weeks, the Oakmont area and the East Mountain area have been subject to several car break-ins. Neighbors have been vigilant and their vigilance finally paid off the other morning. A suspect was identified. A huge police presence came to East Mountain in the morning between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m., did a search of the whole area and eventually found the supposed person down at Garrity's. And uniquely, this fellow was wrapping change, from the change that he was gathering from the cars, he was taking it down and turning it into cash at Garrity's in the change machine. And that's where he was apprehended. So congratulations to the, the neighbors of Oakmont and also to my friends and neighbors on East Mountain for their diligence and also for the, the quick response that the Scranton Police Department supplied us and relieving us of this problem. And that's it.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with McCarthy Tire Service to provide new tires for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I did have a question about this. Within the legislation, it says that McCarthy Tires was the most responsible bidder. However, it doesn't say that they were the lowest bidder. I did request copies and received them today of the other bids. I did not get a chance to go through them yet, so I'm not sure if McCarthy Tires was actually the lowest bidder. But if they weren't, I, I would like to ask Mr. Gallagher, the DPW Director, what that means when it says there that they're the most responsible bidder. So if you're not going to choose the lowest one, then there should be more of an explanation of why. Thank you.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with De Naples Towing Incorporated to provide towing services for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company to provide retread tires for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I have the same question with 5B as I did with 5B. It says, "Goodyear Tire was the most responsible bidder," but it doesn't say that they were the lowest. I requested a copy of those bids, received them today, didn't get a chance to go through them, so I will pose the same question as I did with 5B on this one. Thank you.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, file of the Council Number 119, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-17 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of $19,133.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question?
Yes, just on the question. I know I spoke about this two weeks ago, but just to reiterate, this is an awesome piece of equipment, laser technology that scans accident scenes and crime scenes in a fraction of a time to the millimeter. And it saves the data and it is just a great tool in the toolbox for the Scranton Police Department and to get it on a grant is fantastic. So good work. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B previously tabled. 7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 192, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling Service Incorporated for plumbing services for the City of Scranton Fire Department Facility Improvement Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 193, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling Service Incorporated for HVAC services for the City of Scranton Fire Department Facility Improvement Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 194, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Mike Walsh Electrical Incorporated for electrical services for the City of Scranton Fire Department Facility Improvement Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 195, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Keystone Quarry Incorporated to provide the city 2,000-ton more or less anti-skid sand for the period October 25, 2017 through April 30, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 196, 2017, appointment of Jessica Rothschild, 244 Putnam Streets, Granton, Pennsylvania 18508, as a member of the Human Relations Commission effective Sep- excuse me, September 12, 2017. Ms. Rothschild will be replacing Reverend Catherine Simmons, who resigned on August 7, 2017. Ms. Rothschild will fill the unexpired term of Reverend Catherine Simmons, which is scheduled to expire on October 18, 2018.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.